County special meeting is now in session. Honorable Mayor Todd Folsom presiding.
All right, we'll come to order, please. If you would, take your cell phones and turn them off if you would like, please. And let's have our prayer and pledge. Commissioner Mark Willem, if you would, please, start with our prayer, please.
Good morning, my dear.
Dear everybody, thank you so much for your wonderful day of honor. Well, we thank you for this body of commissioners that we do for the county each and every day. Be with each family member here, represent the county, Lord, may you be your will to do the best judgment here that you be the God and Lord and all that, so. Give us what we feed each and every day, Lord. In your name I pray.
Amen. Commissioner Chad St. James, please, please, please.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated, please. All right, come into order. All right, we'll have roll call, if you would, please, now.
Hale?
Here.
Lumper?
Here.
Deveritt?
Here.
Gavin? Gillum?
Here.
Grackham?
Here.
Hansley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Killmore?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
LeNeer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Same?
Here.
Bickers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
All right, y'all have a chance to, right now, we need to move in on the agenda. We've got public phone, please, can you hear that sheet? For our agenda. Nobody signed up for our public phone for the agenda, so we'll move on. You have a chance to look at the minutes, please, from August nineteenth, from our regular session. So, what was the question? Chair, have a motion second on the floor. Tell her who's in the minutes. Have a question? Yes, sir. It says that on that public phone that's attached, is there, where is it attached to that?
You already have that.
That's from previous.
Pardon? You already have the, should have gotten that.
Your minutes, you state, we're on the minutes. Yeah. On the minute, it says, public phone.
It's attached in the original.
Original, we don't, we don't, how do we get access to that?
A copy of people who signed up in the state? I've never done that. I've never done that, so I've never, nobody ever asked me to send out a copy of a sign up sheet.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. So, it says minutes for the last regular session, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please, say yes by the same. Aye. The votes like that. Minutes have passed. All right, we have two noteers in front of us here, Mr. Brooks and Ms. Moore.
So, most agree, second.
Motion been made and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please, say yes by the same. Aye. All vote. All right, we had our reports. Do we have any from our county officials tonight? Mr. Swift?
I'm not ready.
I'm not ready. Ms. Moore, do you have anything?
We're good.
We're good, all right. Josh Post, do you have anything?
Sure, sir.
All right. And our county officials, county officials. All right, we'll move on to our departments. Now, we do have a correction here on this agenda, ladies and gentlemen. We don't have Mr. Graves to be here tonight, and then Ms. Hudson for their health department, she has to reschedule for our next one as well. And that'd be good, because I'd like to have her and Sarah Skinner, who is our Alzheimer's advocate in West Tennessee, I'd like to have them speaking, and what an important job that is. All right, we'll move on. Mr. Burnett, could you please, sir? Well, good evening. Hello. Mr. Smith, I've been asked, if you all would, let me just pull these down when we're speaking, so they, everybody can speak. Can all of us hear everything we're saying? Sometimes it's hard on them, okay. We'll make sure that it's clear and loud. Go ahead, Jim.
All right, good afternoon, please, gentlemen.
It's all right, everybody's doing well. She's called a quick tour report. Nothing, not a lot of changes, still around in the four hundred calls per month range. We do have one ambulance that's been in the body shop. We're expecting it back by the end of the week, so that'd be a very good thing. I did also bring up, we got a big class coming up that we're gonna have at the ambulance service that I think is part of that's on the agenda for here, but just want to let y'all know that with that class, there's a stipend that the state is due, and that will get all of our employees to sign it. It's an eight hundred dollar stipend. It doesn't cost the county a penny over in this class. The best also gives everybody all of those CEUs or education within any degree of the license, so we appreciate that for our service, and everybody will appreciate that. Other than that, any questions on my day?
We still run an ambulance in the.
When we can, you know, it's like, do we have an ambulance in Ballard as well? And they're out of calls, but they're out, we're running so much, there's not a lot of time that it's actually there.
Our director was running calls today. Almost, almost day to day the last week or so, I've been out of calls.
Mr. Jenkins, once you get that ambulance back to the body shop, I mean, you probably run it there?
Six, they'll have all six in the building.
And it is hard, we're gonna have one in one of the ballgames, and things about that time that's wrecked, so they had to divert that call, leave to the wreck, and that's, and I explain that on one of our upcoming events at some of the ballgames, you know, we'd love to have them there, but if a call comes in, they have to leave, you know, if it's an emergency, of course, you know, we do that, so it's anything. We're trying to work on some more issues too. Great, that was, and we appreciate you being here. All right, may I say? All right, Commissioner. LeNeer, if you would, please, sir, we have a few budget amendments we need to tie to up on here, please.
Yes, sir. Four budget amendments tonight. Budget committee did not need to, pretty self-explanatory, take the questions as we go, should be able to take them all together. Number one, sheriff's office, dividend pay line, seven eighty, credit to communication equipment, seven eighty, it's line up transfer, including excess fund, dividend pay line, communication equipment line, balance the line after divorce, et cetera, big. Number two, dividend guard pay line, twenty thousand, credit to building maintenance, ten thousand, and equipment maintenance, ten thousand, your reason on the right, using excess funds in the guard pay line to reimburse these lines after having to purchase a new washer for the deal. Number three, ambulance department, debiting the opioid reserve count, eight thousand five hundred, credit to in-service training, eight thousand five hundred. This was approved by the commission on August nineteenth. This is the budget amendment that followed. And last one, number four, veteran services, debiting fund balance, one thousand five hundred, crediting repair and maintenance buildings, one thousand five hundred, and that's to reimburse the VFW for repairs and maintenance for our new veteran service officer to conduct business, because he had, we had to move that from the National Guard building.
If there's no other questions, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, please be approved, get it through here.
So, sir.
Motion's been made and properly stated. Any questions on the motion? Any questions on the ambulance? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Madam Perk, if you would, please.
Hale?
Yes.
Lumper?
Yes.
Deveritt?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grackham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Killmore?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
LeNeer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passed. I'll move into mayor's report for community grants, grants, and health, of course, and I wouldn't like to mention in the jail, there was a letter that came down from Tennessee Corrections Institute, that voted to approve the certification of your facility. Sincerely, congratulations, or extended to you and your staff for the dedication to professionalism demonstrated in achieving this certification. So, we're very proud of our department and the hard work that they put in in maintaining this, this certification, for it's coming down from the state, so. On the mayor's report, just a couple of things that I need to mention, and Commissioner Miller, you may, I may bring some information to you, well, we talked about, the ambulance, we, that policy, as so long as it's been presented, I think it's been emailed out of a new policy, and we have to mention that, and that has to be put into the minutes, that that has been received, and so we need to mention that, so we didn't make out that's been received.
Somebody employee mail you, we mailed, we emailed that out.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have to mention that in the minutes to make sure that's, that's what the requirements are.
Commissioner Deveritt, do you need a hard copy of that?
Yeah, you have, well, we didn't make a copy, a hard copy, but we have one for you, Commissioner, but that's been received through the email about the ambulance department for their personnel policy, but we will get you one, sir. I'll get you one printed off tomorrow. The mayor's report, there's a three-star grant that we get applied for, and we did receive that, it's intended, acceptance on that, there's just three different categories I need to let you know about. The ADDs, we've been talking about for a few months, I think those are vital to save lives. Those are equipment that you put in to the first responders, to the sheriff's department, where if someone's having a heart attack, and they get there before the ambulance, they can administer this. Some of them are single pads, what you call a pad that puts on them where you can plug in, and they will, I believe, go into a certain type of shock mode, but we have those that are included in the grant, and I have to have an acceptance, I just found this out yesterday, and we have to do a motion to accept that grant and to put those items in. It's a reimbursement grant, so I'll have to get that here in just a few minutes to accept that three-star grant. Part of it will be to do a study about our storm shelters, and they have a line item for that as well, because they're looking at either seeing where one may be built, if possible, or hardening up a certain location that's already here, and what that means, it has to be certified, but to be like a storm shelter, or a tornado shelter, for certain things, they have to come in certified, so there's money in that three-star award to do that, so. We'll move on here just real quick. Okay, we have some events coming up for the rodeo next weekend, the homecoming, there's a family feud for the Carl Perkins Center, the, that's September the twenty-ninth, to recognize the work that the Carl Perkins Center does. Mayor McTistock and myself will be presenting an award called the Community Star Award to the Carl Perkins Center for their efforts and what they do for the children. The, there was a food drive, we have this in Middleton, and Derek can test it, that feeds several hundred people typically each month. We might do a one to two that they can't come in, but when they come in, there's over four hundred people, and that's provided by the Mid-South Food Bank. They do that in Middleton First Baptist Church. Of course, there is involved, Linda Ernies, so many people, so many volunteers that make this happen, and we appreciate that. I cannot stress to you the importance of volunteering and trying to help somebody in need. I appreciate that, thank you very much for what you do. All right, we had a, there's also one in Ballard, the Ag Center, and that was provided by Southwest, I believe they fed, I know over four hundred as well. We had a September the ninth, we had a break town hall meeting, Commissioner Miller, and Commissioner Miller, if you would, would you like to speak just a minute on that, and share some information that we have?
We had a town hall meeting, a community town hall meeting on September the ninth, and Ms. Ruby Curvin was there, the director of the hospital, and Ms. Marla LeNeer White, the CEO and director of the Community Health Center, and we also had Ms. Sonia Godwin, she is the CEO of Children and Family Services, and a lot of valuable information was given out. Ms. Ruby talked about the hospital, the new hospital that is coming is pretty much gonna be the same, but it'll be new in location, so that's good. Ms. Marla LeNeer White talks about the importance of a community health center, and why it is important for our community, because they have a sliding scale, and people can know they do not have insurance, and they will be seen, and then Ms. Godwin talked about, Ms. Quinn, sorry, she talked about the services that the children and family services offer in their community, but we can also get it. They have a food box they give out every week, they do free testing, and how those services are important, the importance of HIV testing, and how nobody really talks about it, but it is still viable, and it's real, it's real, so it was very informative. I appreciate all that they came, but.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. Appreciate all the town halls that are taking place, and I think that's very important for commissioners to have town hall meetings with public, so. We'll move into our public comment section, we've got that on there, people that have signed up, because Hale Conroy is not here tonight, so that's, that would be the last thing on there.
Mayor Post, can you, you said that the three-star grant will provide ADDs?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know where those ADDs will be? Where we place them? Will they be?
We'll place those in the sheriff's vehicles.
Okay.
He's requesting to have thirty, I believe maybe twenty-six for the vehicles, gotta get the last token on that, but then I'd like to have one in the courthouse and different county facilities. I think they're already in certain facilities. I believe the Board of Education already has one, that's wonderful, and wherever that we need one.
What about the other municipalities that the ambulance, which is fast, they would like to, so, Middleton, Grand Junction, Salisbury, or two of those smaller communities, are they, do they have access to ADDs or something else that can help those communities?
They do, they have municipal grants that will help them for those as well. That's a good question. We encourage all the municipalities to apply for those. I think Mayor Bowden supplied the different three-star grants, or different grants that will help in that. A lot of times the operations can, and there's also first responders have them, now there's equipment, and I believe the first responders, I know that they will see certain type of funding from the department, correct me, they probably already have that lined up, what they need for the grants, but they can apply for those as well, yeah, and I know some of the churches have them as well, but they have to maintain the batteries on those, they have to keep those in working order, and I think it'd be great for the different city halls to get those, they could range from seventeen hundred dollars to, to only three thousand dollars, but the single pad would even help if you've got one in the city halls, if you're out, if you're out somewhere, and so first responder could get there before the ambulance. We do wanna make sure that they are compatible. Well, where they have to be, when they pull up, and they have to hook on to a compatible to their, their equipment that Jamie would have on the ambulance, they have to be able to be hooked in and read each other. Am I correct on that, Jane?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Are there grants for churches and organizations to give as well, and they can give those, or how?
I don't know, that's, yeah, that would be a nonprofit, but I do know that some of the churches have them, that would be a nonprofit. Now, we go through Southwest on our procurement policy, Southwest government district, but there's money to play with municipalities as well. All right, let's move, we have on our public comments, Ms. Betsy, yeah, Ms. Betsy Dean. And on our public comments, we, we've had this for years, and then we have, we also allow for the agenda items. This is for if you, if you have a question, or if you have a comment you'd like to say and talk to the commission about, some things that we don't have authority over, and we'd be glad to get out to the right people that can help you. Oftentimes, we see this, people call and say, well, I'm a gentleman, I need help with so and so, and I'm talking, and we always say this, you need to be able to talk to the people that you represent, especially the taxpaying citizens, and, but, Ms. Betsy, you have a couple of minutes, if you'd like to address it, Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Dean, I live at six twenty car, I would like to get something up to see by fixing out the road. There's five houses down there, the road hadn't been meant to dump them since twenty thirteen, and we allowed, I hope they come and use them, get it on, come back and use the other. I stopped there and stayed there, and all the time I call and tell them they don't come and do it, so I need to make them, I need to see if it's, um, it's something down.
Good morning, Ms. Betsy. Mr. Swift is here tonight, he is our road superintendent, and after a minute, I'm sure Mr. Swift will be glad to talk to you and help you out, and that's, that's the right there for our road.
I like, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, just that. Next person, Mr. Berg?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor, for asking me to speak. First thing I wanna say, again, thank you to the mayor and for everyone allowing me to speak. I've said it before when I address my commission, I think it's every citizen's right to come and address you, bring their concerns to you, that after the end of the day, it's what you are here for. Now you can breathe, I'm not here to bring a problem to you. The mayor wanted me to come and speak about the Arts Center and some of the things we have coming up. So, the Arts Center strives to bring the best of arts entertainment to Harpens around the counties, so we wanted to let you know with a few things that we have coming up. October the eleventh, we're doing Harpens Got Talent, so that's our annual talent contest. New this year, we open that up to contestants outside of Harpens County, so whether that's gymnastics, whether it's magician, whether it's singing, whatever that talent may be, the registration is open for that, you can sign it on our website, so be sure to share that at church, at work, with family, friends, anyone that's interested in competing in that. It's a great event that we have over here. A few tell, tell you about a few big things that we picked up. October thirtieth, we have a group with Twitty and Lynn, it's Comley Twitty's grandson, Moretta Lynn's granddaughter, they'll be performing their tribute to Comley and Moretta on the October thirtieth at the Arts Center. November the fifteenth, we're doing Wicked Part One, so Wicked Part Two comes out called The Week. We're gonna do Wicked Part One, we're gonna play, this is a movie, this sing-along version, so if anybody needs a recap or refresher, or you haven't seen Part One, and you wanna see that before Part Two comes out, Call of Duty, that would be November the fifteenth. The weekend of December twelfth is our Christmas production, that is The Week, that'll be adults and children's production. It follows a young boy who doesn't like how commercialized Christmas has become, and he kind of navigates through that. There's a Christmas, traditional Christmas church play, Not Gone Wrong, comedy to get in there, so it'll be a great production. And then the last thing that we have for this year that we just announced is we'll have Ronnie McDowell in concert December the twentieth, so we've got a few more things coming out early next year, which I want to give you a heads up of some things that are coming, and some big names that are coming to follow, or encourage you to spread the word in your churches and your communities, because at the end of the day, any event that we do, whether it's our production, or whether it's a big name, we're contributing to the tourism and the tax base of Harpens County, so please help us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for what you do also as well for the, for the Christmas squad, I see Jerry Wayne back there. Thank you, sir, for what you do, Christmas squad. All right, we have next on the, on the list, I believe Mayor Bowden. Mayor Bowden, welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I still here just to extend a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the town of Whiteville, for the county turning out overwhelmingly, for our fifth annual downtown festival. It was wonderful, it was certainly a great event, and I also wanted to thank all the municipalities who worked together collaboratively with us. When we need things, we can go to those municipalities, and they always extended a helping hand, and I appreciate that so very much, even with our camera, we appreciate all the help y'all give us, so. Thank you so much for working with us and coming to our events and supporting us the way you do. Also, let me mention the fact that Whiteville is having a breast cancer walk, awareness walk, on the first Saturday in October, and so I know I will be walking in that, and we hope some of you will, who, you know, some people who are breast cancer survivors, and also those people who have succumbed to breast cancer, we'd ask to walk in their memory. It's absolutely free, donations will be accepted for breast cancer awareness, and we hope that you can just turn out for that as well. That will take place on the first Saturday in October at seven thirty a.m. at our Civic Park there in Whiteville. Thank you, and I hope y'all will just come and walk with us for this word you call us. Thank you again for supporting Whiteville in the way that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Bowden. Thank you, sir. All right, we have, please, we have Mayor Spencer. Mayor Spencer, welcome, sir.
What an opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
County Commissioners, uh, there's only two that are still around here, over the night, still hanging in there doing their job, but let me thank each of you for the service that you render to Harpens County, and I know that the job is not easy, you get tasked with some very tough issues, but someone has to be the seat to handle those issues. I'm here to speak about just public comments in total regarding Harpens County. I'm a big part of transparency. I believe that the more you know, the more you hear, you are able to make better decisions. These individuals that are out here now are the people that you knocked on doors, sent letters to, went and asked to vote for, and they deserve, we deserve to know and to share. They deserve our money. We hear different things that are going on in the county, we open to you to share that with you, so you can hear the sentiments of what we are dealing with, what we think, what we're planning, what we would like to be doing, what we would like to be speaking on, and we know that there's opportunities and there are routes. Each commissioner covers a particular district. I encourage individuals to talk with our county commissioners. The mayor's team is all, as always, phones are open, and I just encourage people to talk to those individuals, but more importantly, the opportunity needs to be where individuals can come to you, can come to this forum. The advantage of that is, when you hear someone speak, every one of you hear the same thing, because if I go to one, like, my commissioner, if I get something specifically in issue three, I'm gonna go to them first. I respect, but they are dealing with issue three, and I will share my thoughts with them, but if I believe that it is not gonna be communicated as I have told them, then I want you to hear it as well, because they can't say it like I say it. And I know that time is of essence, transparency is important, and we need to be able to share and allow the public to speak, so you can hear concerns. There are issues in our county that need to be dealt with, and I believe they can be dealt with in a loving, caring, and really a strategic way. But if we shut it down, we shut it down transparency, we shut it down, we don't wanna hear it, and all you're doing there is giving the impression, may not be, but you give the impression that something is being hidden, something is not being done correctly and above all, but let us all do what needs to be done to help transparency, to be in front of everything that we do. We have nothing to hide, nothing to be embarrassed about, and give people who voted for you the opportunity to share forth their opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, sir. Next we have on our public comments, I apologize, I cannot read the names correctly, it's Christie? Okay.
Yeah, well, this is my scribble, let me, I apologize. Thank you for allowing me to speak, first off. On last week, the community wanted me to give. Um, on last week, uh, the community wanted me to give some paper, um, to the Board of Education. And I had it here tonight, this petition from some people. And, uh, I was not able to present this to the board. And, uh, honestly, I don't know what to do with it at this point because it's been some people's thoughts in the community. And some people took time to sign this and expected for me to give it to the board, but I was not able to. So I do have that. And honestly, I don't know what to do with it anymore. But I did wanna come and speak about what I tried to explain, um, to the board last week when I told them that what they were doing was illegal, it's called free speech. And, uh, the last time I was here, I thought I wasn't ready to speak anymore. But under advisement, I learned, okay, yeah, if you have your first amendment right, you can speak. Uh, and so that's what I'm gonna continue to do. So I wanna talk about prior restraint. Uh, prior restraint applies to states due to incorporation through the Fourteenth Amendment, meaning states are bound by the First Amendment prohibition against this form of censorship. And that's what happened last week with censorship. The Supreme Court has long established that government entities, including the state and local governments, cannot impose restrictions on speech or pub, uh, or publication before it occurs. Except in a very narrow and exceptional circumstance, like those involving immediate national security threats. And I don't think I'm that. Uh, censorship. Prior restraint is a form of censorship that undermines the core purpose of the First Amendment in preventing speech or publication before it can reach the public, which I'm trying to reach the public. Prior restraint, also referred to as prior censorship or prior public publication censorship. Is censorship imposed usually by government or institution on expression that prohibits particular instances of expression. It is in contrast to censorship that establishes, establishes the general subject matter restrictions that and reviews particular instances of expression only after the expression has taken place. Prior restraint is presumably unconstitutional under the First Amendment and is almost never permissible as it's seen, as it is seen as the most serious and least powerful infringement on free speech and press rights. Prior restraint is disfavored because it's a threat of liberty. And unfortunately, I think that's what we said on last week. And I just came to share that because apparently I cannot get on the agenda at the Board of Education and I cannot have public speaking. And obviously, it was all three of us last week that were denied public speaking. And when the attorney, um, got up and spoke about the statute on public speaking, um, again, you heard a board member speak out saying, who are you? So my question is, what exactly is happening at the Board of Education? We still do not have a public comment from anybody at the board, although they have been meeting behind closed doors discussing this issue, but not answering anything to the public about what was probably going on, and that track record happened last Tuesday. And I just wanna break into everybody's attention that free speech was happening. And I had no idea what the rest of us was gonna speak on, but this is all about transparency. And that's what I'm trying to get to, transparency. Thank you.
And next we have Pastor Ryan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Senator Commissioner. Uh, I just, uh, came tonight, uh, for a concern that when our Commissioner Jenkins had his last town hall meeting at our church in Grand Junction, John Shallow, uh, it was something mentioned that night concerning the debris and the trash, which I understand, I think the sheriff's department do allow the inmates to get out clean. But I was just, um, gonna come on behalf of citizens, uh, and Commissioner Jones, just wondering, was it something we probably could get together on as a county, uh, in our different churches, different municipalities, come together and try to do something? And I think even Mayor Spencer mentioned something that night, uh, about going green or something like that. Just trying to do something like that, man, that our citizens get their career cleaned up a little bit, make things a little, little better.
Yes, sir. And I, I've, I've been saying that for, for years. We need, but we've got a great county, beautiful county. And, um, and we're surprised that people just illegally dumping, throwing their trash out. I was picking up trash yesterday and trying to find lanes in the bag, actually, so I could turn it in. But from that point, we want something done and, and recorded. But I think it's great to have that, if the community can get behind it, the churches, if we can start and have one point in South End and Moonland. The litter grant is provided by the sheriff's department. And, and they take the trustees out. Now, right now, it's gonna be a few days because something happened to the molder and we've got a little debt fixed, and, uh, but then they'll be back out. And, um, we've got several roads that we'd like to put down on that. But I'm just gonna make a plea to the citizens to stop trash in that county. A beautiful county, and stop this. Uh, had, had one guy say, and it was, he was caught. And I don't mind saying, he was caught, and, uh, he was caught, a guy who was dumping on coffee. And made him pick it up. So that, um, he said, well, the landfill was closed, it was a holiday. So, uh, talking with some officials about this, they said, yeah, but the banks were closed. My goodness, where is the common sense, you know, nowadays? But thank you, Pastor. I think you've got something coming up, don't you? Thank you.
Uh, yeah, the church, um, our seventh anniversary, of course, I'm there, seventy years. We're gonna celebrate, uh, next Sunday, twenty-two thirty, uh, so, uh, you can make it, I love to see that. Uh, Commissioner Jenkins, everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, Christians, too. And I do thank you for your work on that. All right, is there any other businesses we have, any other commissioners that wanna say anything? I appreciate everybody being on the phone and the comments.
I think I have a name. Uh, that was mine. I signed in for Chris Stires.
Okay, okay, that, and that's you?
That's what I said.
Okay, well, I, I couldn't read the name. I apologize. And I, I had that wrong. I'm sorry.
I'm in a, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be this, like, uh, we've lived in Harbin County for the last thirteen years. We moved here from Middleton and were, I mean Middleton, and we're excited to, um, serve in a rural area. And I'm a substitute at Oliver Elementary, and my husband and I have been blessed to serve at First House, Grand Junction for the last thirteen years. We had, um, I lost my husband two weeks ago, um, on a Sunday at church. He would've thought that was the best way to go, um, preaching. But it was very dramatic to those of us who had to respond to him and the congregation. Um, in twenty-twenty, my parents came to live with us. And I had to speak up then about our transport time and how long it took for ambulances to make it to Grand Junction. Shortly after that, we got the hub in Middleton, where Middleton now houses some ambulances. And I was actively doing CPR. I do not remember everything, but I know it took a long time. So I promised our community and my church people that responded to our family that day that I needed to do something out of that to try to better all the wonderful people who live in Grand Junction and healthcare services take so long to get there. So, um, I felt like if I didn't share, that, um, so I just wouldn't be the right thing. So I was able to hold it together and I'm gonna leave because I've got girls at home that need me. But, um, I've heard six ambulances, one in the body shop. We've had a wonderful service from them before for other people, but the response time for both of those ambulances that Sunday was a long time. And I just think as a community and as a county, we just, we gotta do better for those that are still thirty minutes away from where that response, you know, from where those ambulances come from. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sincere. Uh, and Commissioner, we thought that would be good, uh, I need to have those AEDs ready in place for those municipalities. I know some of the churches did have them there. But it would be good to have one there at the city hall where the first responder could get there before the ambulance came. All right, is there any other business that we need? Um, I do need to ask about that three-star. We need to vote to accept that three-star. Some, so. Motion been made in the second, um, to accept the three-star application of the Blessed Lions Act. And it's ready to discuss on the motion. And I would need to vote a common vote for that, please, to the second.
Hale?
Yes.
Doctor?
Yes.
D. Mary?
Yes.
Killa?
Yes.
Ratchet?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kenmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right, that's, that is your motion to the chair. Let me say to the chair.